Okay, council is convened for a work session this morning. Sustainable future for Parks and Nature Division. We have Jenny Coker here and Ross Hoover. So take it away. We're looking forward to this.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, council. We're so pleased to be here today. For the record, I'm Jenny Coker, Deputy Director of Public Works, and I'm here with Ross Hoover, Division Manager of Parks and Nature. We're here today to give you a deep dive into the value, the mission, and all of the amazing assets included within the county portfolio. Ross joined the county November 4th, 2024, and in the four and a half months, he's taken his 27 years in the industry at Issaquah and Tuallaton to take a deep dive into our resources with assistance from the staff. What we're presenting today is an overview of what we have, the vision, and really, it's a message of what the future can bring. We're really excited to present this to you. So with that, Ross Hoover.
Let's see, is that on now? Okay, there we go. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, councilors. Yes, so this is a conversation, the start of a conversation, and it's a positive conversation. It's a conversation about growth. It's a conversation about how valued our Parks and Nature system is within the county and throughout the county. And it provides, this conversation provides some fantastic questions that we can dive into and talk about how we answer as a community, as a county, and what we want the future of our park system to look like so that potentially we can meet the growth needs of Clark County and the park needs throughout the system. So we'll talk about all of that. On the first slide, this is just an overview of what we're covering today in different categories and sections. We'll go through Parks and Nature, what it is we do and why we exist, what our mission is, the current state of our system and our financial picture. We'll also look at projections and forecasts for the future. And then we'll talk about what sustainability looks like and how we meet our growth needs. And we'll look at some specific models of how this is done. So the next slide, an overview of what we do in Parks and Nature. We acquired the property. We plan and design for that property and plan for the growth ahead. And then we develop those sites into parks and natural areas, and then we maintain and operate those sites. We also, through usage, we have a lot of groups, a lot of nonprofit organizations and businesses that we work with that operate in our parks. And you can see photo of Luke Jensen here. That's a facility that's heavily used, and we'll talk about specific numbers in a little bit. Our parks are loved and heavily used. Park-specific acreage throughout the county, we have over 7,100 acres. 7166 is our current inventory number, and those are parks. Those are differentiated from legacy lands that are really conservation areas, and those are acquired through the Legacy Land Program funded primarily by Conservation Futures Tax. So we play a role in those legacy lands properties as well, where we maintain, we help maintain those properties. And total, it's 111 Parks and Sites throughout the county. And on the next slide, those Parks and Sites are categorized into these groups. One, neighborhood parks. These are small, small areas. You might see a playground, a play area, a grass area, benches, maybe a path. These are primarily within the Vancouver urban growth boundary. Community parks, those are larger in size. Think of Pacific Park, for example, ball fields, dog park, play areas, picnic shelters. Community parks are larger and are typical of a county park system. Regional parks are the large-scale parks that really are our high visitation areas. So from Lewisville to Frenchman's Bar to Lacamas Lake Regional, those parks see our largest number of visitors and actually pull visitors from outside of the county, outside of the Pacific Northwest even, visit these areas. And then the last category, natural areas. These are areas that are set aside. They may have some hiking trails on them. Passive use, recreation uses are typical of a natural area. And so we have all of these different categories of parks in our system. And on the next slide, we talked a little bit about the parks being really heavily used. And so these are some actuals from 2024 of our picnic shelter reservations, which we had 1,700 last year. Special events in our park, we had 259. 3,600 hours of use at Luke Jensen alone. We sold parking passes, annual passes. We sold 5,616 in day-of transactions to park over almost 140,000. We know that those parking receipts give us an indicator as to use, but we know that actual usage is much, much higher than 139,000. Let's talk specifically about what we do and why we do our work. And the first slide in this section is about the requirements and how we are trying to fulfill the needs primarily of the Growth Management Act from the state. And that shows up in the WAC and RCW in the code. Within RCW, this RCW that's listed, parks play a role in planning goal number three, which is transportation on our trail system. Number five, economic development. Number nine, open space and recreation. Number 10, environment. Number 11, citizen participation coordination. Number 12, public facilities and services. Number 13, historic preservation. We have a number of historic sites within our inventory. Climate change and resiliency. And shorelines of the state, which is number 15. So a number of specific items within the RCW planning goals to meet GMA requirements. That is articulated through our Clark County Comp Plan, of which our Parks Recreation Open Space Plan is incorporated by reference into the Comp Plan. And so those are the statute-level detail of why we do the work we do. On the next slide, we want to just show really quickly what our mission looks like. And so we've just revised our mission, refocused ourselves in some key areas and specifying particular groups of outcomes we're going to be looking for in our park system. So we have just revised this in our Clark County Parks and Nature, enriches communities by creating and stewarding parks that promote health and wellness, boost economic vitality, preserve natural areas, and ensure access to the outdoors for all. And then our community. I talked about specific outcomes we're looking for. Our community sees our parks in these terms, not in terms of the statute to plan for growth, but really why people use our parks. And so we had a really good internal conversation and external conversations, and these show up within our PROS Plan. That is making sure that we ensure that access is paramount, that everyone feels welcome and can access our parks in our natural areas. That we are committed to sustainable stewardship, maintaining and developing parks sustainably. That we play a role in the economic vitality of the county and cities throughout the county. The number of families that come in to use Luke Jensen Park, for example, or Harmony Sports Complex on a summer weekend, those folks are coming to the county and they're staying in hotels and they're visiting local businesses. So our facilities, our work plays a key role throughout the county in economic vitality. And then the last one that I'm particularly passionate about is that we have a really key role in the health and wellness, mental, emotional, physical health and wellness. Parks are places where people come to socialize, be with others, and get exercise, whether it's a hike on a trail or a football game in a field. We play a key role in our community. So this is why we exist. And so we're going to be measuring our outcomes upon these criteria that are listed within our mission. And our community feels it and sees it and values our system. You saw the numbers of picnic shelter rentals, for example, 1,700 last year. Those are not just some number on a page. Those are our birthday parties of our grandkids and children. Those are our 60th wedding anniversary celebrations. Those are quinceaneras and other events that are taking place in our community. So our community, upon surveying folks in our last PROS Plan update, 91% of those we surveyed visit a park or natural area in the county at least once a month. And 98% of those we surveyed believe that Parks and Nature is important to the quality of life in Clark County. So we're hearing that. We're hearing that when we talk to folks and when we're engaging with people. So that's sort of the why and why we exist and what we do. Let's shift into the next chapter here, and this is the current state of our system. So this map, while hard to see, gives a good overview. It doesn't encompass all of our parks. There are actually a couple north of this map, but it gives you a good idea of the distribution within the county of our park system. So you'll notice there are large parks. Those are the large regional parks, so Vancouver Lake that you can see. You'll see what looked like on this map as a dot. Those are neighborhood parks. Those are walkable spaces that people can access to bring children to a playground, for example, or to walk the dog. And then we have community parks that are sort of in the middle of those. And then we have the orange areas, which are natural areas or legacy lands that are passive use, hiking trails, maybe a gravel parking lot. So it's a very diverse system. It is an exceptional system, extremely unique assets within our park system that I would say are unique to even the best systems throughout the country. So what you'll notice in this map, too, is that the city of Vancouver urban growth area is kind of that light shaded color. That's where the dominant parks feature are neighborhood parks. Those are the small neighborhood parks. That area also corresponds to where our main dedicated funding source is, and that's the Greater Clark Park District, the Metro Parks District that was created by voters 2005. And that provides funding for parks' operations and maintenance within the GCPD or Greater Clark Park District. Outside of that, GCPD, that shaded area, essentially, it's virtually perfectly aligned with the urban growth boundary. Outside of the urban growth boundary, those are funded primarily by general fund dollars. And so most of our regional parks fall under that category. So kind of two funding sources. There are a lot of fantastic parks here. There are also a lot of gaps in level of service. So on the next slide, we'll talk about this a little bit. So this is from our PROS Plan, Parks Recreation Open Space Plan, that was adopted into our Comp Plan by reference. So you can see the gap. This is figure 26 in the document. You can see the acreage gap, and you can see the development gap. We don't develop all of the acres. Some of those acres are left as natural area, and other areas are committed to as active recreation spaces, so ball fields and picnic shelters and active use spaces. So we know there's a gap. This is not unique. Every park system that's growing, every region in the country, in the state that is experiencing high growth, sees a gap. And our goal in planning is to fill that gap with new park amenities. Now, on the next slide, you'll see similar data. This is within the urban growth boundary of Vancouver. This is figure 33, the current deficits as of 2020 and gaps. And then you can see in 2030 that those gaps grow, and the deficits grow by 2030. The reason I wanted to talk about these acreage level of service definitions and these gaps is really to let you know that we will not fill these gaps. And the reason we will not be able to fill these gaps is not a result of a lack of capital funding, it's a result of a lack of operating funding. So if we build these, we cannot maintain them. And so we'll talk about that next. On the next slide, quick overview, some high-level numbers, approximately 521,000 residents throughout the county. We have 7,166 parks, defined as parks, not legacy lands. We have 31 full-time staff in our operations and maintenance group, and we have an operating budget of 8.14 for that group. A large proportion of that obviously is going to wages and salaries. So what I wanted to do is to try to understand how we compare against other, let's do some benchmarking. And one way to do that is to use the best available data. On the next slide, the standard is the National Recreation Parks Association Agency Performance Review. And so this is a snapshot directly from that document that shows operating expenditures per capita in a park system. And it shows by agency size, by population of that service area. So we are, obviously, we're on the far right of this chart in the gray bar, over 250,000 residents. The median, so the median is half of the agencies are above and half of the agencies are below in term of operating expenditure per capita. 5761 is the national median for an agency our size. And on the next slide, we'll look at how we compare to that national median. So 5761 is the national median, and we are currently at 1562 per capita in terms of operating dollars. There are other ways to look at this, other ways to benchmark. We'll go to the next slide. It shows our operating expenditure per acre, so measuring not against people, but acreage. And its national is 4,421, and we are at 1,136 per acre. So about 26% of the national median. And then the next slide is another way to look at this and benchmark against is our full-time equivalents, our staffing level per 10,000 residents. National median's 4.7 per 10,000, and we are 0.59 per 10,000. So that is the picture. That is the snapshot as to where we're at. The next slide, just kind of a quick summary, our staffing level is significantly under the national average. We are not and we will not meet growth needs for Parks and Nature facilities because of the O and M operating budget gaps. Our operating expenditure is significantly under the national average. And as a result, we're seeing continued deferred maintenance in our existing system. And so this isn't considering the growth that's needed to meet the new residents that move into Clark County. So let's look at the future. Let's look at some growth projections. Let's look at what our deficits, this operating picture does over time. So the first slide within this section is our Greater Clark Park District. So this is within the urban growth boundary of the city of Vancouver, where we have a large number of neighborhood parks, small neighborhood parks that are walkable from people's homes. This is the budget forecast through 2030 for Parks and Nature, GCPD-funded budget. So you can see that the gaps exist currently and grow into the future. And then outside of the Greater Clark Park District, Greater Clark Park District is the area where we have dedicated funding through that Metro Park District that voters voted upon. Outside of that is the regional system on the next slide. So this is the area outside of the GCPD. You'll see existing gaps, and into the future, that gap grows. And then the next slide is the same data in a different format.
If I could real quick, just that last one, if we could go back to that slide? Can we go? Yeah, there we go. Perfect. So is that, the blue lines, is that projection on maintaining existing level of service or is that trying to close the gap?
This is our existing level of service.
Okay. No improvements, just maintaining as it is?
That's right.
Okay, thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
I also would love to, way back when you said that we have a gap and it looked like 50% of the total, what is normal in acreage? Where is that based off? Is that based off of a national average or what other counties usually have? It sounds like we are extremely behind just on the acreage.
So this is typical in a growing community that's rapidly growing. There's typically a gap, and as a lot of the development for future parks is funded by impact fees in part, but also REIT. So the reason we plan and we develop a Parks Recreation Open Space Plan is to intentionally aim to fill these gaps where they exist within the system. It is a normal, in GMA, in the code, it actually talks about this, a requirement to identify gaps. We can fill the gap. There is funding to fill the gap from a capital side. It's the operating issue where we wouldn't be able to maintain those sites.
Okay, but the gap is based on like a national or a GMA standard?
So the standard is set locally. And so it's defined as level of service within our PROS Plan, and I can get you those exact figures. So within the Vancouver urban growth boundary, our standard, our level of service standard is five acres per 1,000 residents. Outside of that, for our regional parks, it's 10 acres per 10,000 residents. These are larger parks. These are, you know, large gathering spaces. And then for our community parks throughout the county, our level of service standard is 2.25 acres per 1,000 residents. So those are level of service standards defined within our PROS Plan, and that's done at a local level, and it varies jurisdiction by jurisdiction.
And so just as a reminder for the PROS Plan, that actually is considered and adopted by council, so our council can change those standards.
Absolutely. Yep.
Chair, what's causing a drop in revenue? I see in 2022, 2023, it was a light increase, but it's decreasing in 2025.
Yeah, great question. Nick Bundy should be on the call from our budget team. And Nick, would you like to answer that question?
If I may as well, there's been some recent staffing impacts that have come up, and those are also not included in these figures, though we'll work on including them.
Are you able to speak to the question about 2025 revenue drop?
Yes, of course. Thank you, councilors. And is this relating to the regional park slide?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, we had additional general fund funding that came in to help fund those deferred maintenance costs in that year.
Yeah, so it was subsidizing. So general fund had to come in and subsidize that because we didn't have enough revenue to pay for the expenses.
I think it would be helpful for us if we could separate that so that we could see the impact of the general fund versus the actual revenue of the greater, or not, this wouldn't be greater parks on this one, but yeah, if we could do that, that'd be nice.
Absolutely.
And while we're paused for questions, I don't really understand the Greater Park District because that serves only the city of Vancouver. And I think, and maybe go through a little bit of history here, because I think what we merged with the city of Vancouver and collectively provided parks and...
Yeah.
If you could summarize that a little bit, so we can understand it.
Certainly.
And so why, if it's the city of Vancouver, why are we talking about it?
Yeah, great question. Yeah. So within the, years ago, the county and the city of Vancouver joined forces to create a separate entity, a park district, that provided services for not only the city of Vancouver, but also Clark County. And that organization dissolved. And when that happened, what community members identified was, within the urban growth boundary, there's still a need for parks, and there needs to be some mechanism to fund the construction, acquisition, and operations of the parks within the urban growth boundary. And so voters...
Was this within the urban growth boundary outside of the city of Vancouver?
Exactly. So essentially, the MPD or Metro Park District, as it's referred to by state statute, voters named ours Greater Clark Park District. And so voters approved just north of the city of Vancouver, city boundary, and all the way north up to the northern edge of the urban growth boundary, designated a separate taxing district to pay for operations of parks in that area, and development of parks in that area. And so today, we manage that park district through the Greater Clark Park District Board, which is the county council. So that's a quick, brief history of how that came to be.
And so it no longer includes the city of Vancouver?
Correct.
Okay. And there's probably a backstory about how that got dissolved, but you don't have to answer that now.
So, yeah. And I don't know the full, quite honestly, don't know the full story. So the city of Vancouver operates a separate, distinctly separate Parks and Recreation Department, separate from the GCPD and separate from the county regional park system. So on this slide, this summarizes and gives a different format for the bar charts you saw previously, and it gives a total gap per year between those differently funded areas of our park system, the Greater Clark Park District and then regional parks.
So this is not including any general fund, correct?
So the general fund does provide funding for regional parks. What this does not, as County Manager just pointed out, does not include the subsidy that we have requested in past years to fill this gap. And so this is essentially showing what that request would be into these future years to fill that gap. So on the next slide, a quick summary of the financial projections. This isn't sustainable, and we have significant deficits now in the operating budget, and we will into the foreseeable future. And those deficits grow. And the reason they grow is the cost grows every year, simply due to inflation, wage increases, and the cost of doing business. So that is a quick summary of the financial picture and forecast into the future. Yeah.
And if I could add, our Parks and Nature staff have been enormously creative in these past years. They've cut almost everything they possibly can. We have park hosts on site to do the maintenance. There is, I think, as we've shown you these benchmarks, there's very, very little left to cut to keep these in operation.
So, and I can give you an example, a real-world example this morning. The parking meter and pay station at Vancouver, at Vancouver Lake, broke and needs to be replaced. It's about a $6,000 cost. We don't have $6,000. So we have to have these hard conversations operationally about how we deploy our operating funds. And so this is being done day by day, incident by incident. And we're extremely fortunate to have an amazing staff who, operationally, are as efficient as it possibly can be. But this is just the reality. It's not a question of reductions in cost. They're, quite honestly, there's really not much to reduce to be able to keep parks open. Okay, let's talk about the future because ultimately, this is... Yeah, sorry.
Oh, I'm just... Oh, I, I'm just assuming because of these, um, restrictions in your budget, we're missing out on opportunities to acquire properties for that gap with rapid development. Is, is that the case? I mean, I assume it would be harder to fill the gap with enough parks per capita in the future if we don't get on top of this now.
That's a, that's a great point, councillor. Yes, we, so we have one, uh, park, brand new park that we're building this year, Curtain Creek. We're really excited about that park. Um, the reason it's only one park is for the reason that you pointed out. There is no way to maintain, uh, future sites. So we have a number of sites throughout the county that are ready for development to help fill these level of service gaps. We don't have the operating dollars to maintain them. And so we are not proceeding. We are, we are holding back. We are focused on, um, new development at a really measured, very measured pace. And we are focused on improvements to existing parks. So for example, this last year, we replaced two playgrounds, brand new playgrounds, fixing picnic shelters and restrooms and so on and so forth. And so that's where we're putting capital dollars i- in existing spaces.
Just to follow up on that, just trying to think of any creative strategies, and I'm not, no expert. I barely know what an urban holding is, but is there any such thing as a parks holding where we can hold land, not have any expectation that we maintain it, but the future purpose would be to fill this gap, but we don't have to weed it or whatever you need to do. It's just holding the land for a future use. Is that a possibility?
That's a great, great question and a great approach, and we are employing, employing that approach. We have sixteen sites within the urban growth boundary of Vancouver, for example, where we're doing just that. And we have regional park spaces as well that are, are, we are holding and we are waiting. We, we know that those spaces are going to be needed to fill the gap. And so, but when we, when the time is right, when the operations funding is there, then we'll, then we'll proceed. So yes, that's a great strategy.
I, I would just add that even if there's minimal, there's still some maintenance that would, you can't just hold land without doing some maintenance because then you become a vector for invasive species. So there's still would be some need for some level of maintenance. But I think a good strategy to minimize that expenditure so that we're still have the ability to acquire.
That's a great point. Thank you.
Yeah, it sounds like you're implementing the strategy, but yet we still have this gap. So it sounds like we can't maximize that strategy because of maybe these minimal costs that we have to do to maintain.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
I'm hoping there's a way to find a solution there because it sounds like just minimizing the vectors of invasive species or something like that. I, I, maybe we can do some short-term mechanism for funding to do that, to support these capital needs that we need. So anyway, maybe this is part of your future.
Yeah. No, the, and, and so, yeah, abso- absolutely councillor, great, uh, great point, great. So yeah, we currently do not have the staffing levels to acquire new, um, call it banked or holds on, on lands because we can't, we literally cannot do that basic level of maintenance that might be a, a rough mow or once a year even that we don't have the capacity for right now. So. And, and I, I'll reiterate this again. This is holding land and ensuring that we are trying, we're doing our best to fill the gaps in the future is very typical of a growing community in a growing county. So this is a story of people wanting to come to Clark County and wanting to move here and businesses wanting to relocate here. And so that pressure is a positive pressure and it's, it's something I think that shows that we are a desirable place within the state.
Okay, the quick question, it's right on the subject here. With impact fees, can impact fees, I know that they can be used for capital, including purchase costs, but can they, uh, my question is, do we go sour with the law on impact fees if we purchase a park but don't open it to the public? You know, don't develop it because it's technically, it's not providing any benefit to the property owners that are, that paid that impact fee.
You're absolutely correct. Um, so that starts in the planning phase within our pros plan. We absolutely need to show that we are, we have a plan for development in the future. There is a time period by which impact fees need to be expended. And so that is absolutely an expectation, not only from the statute, but, but our community members. If we are collecting those fees, we should be building the infrastructure that people expect. And so, yes, we are, we, we are mindful of that and, and are planning for that.
Does, does that restrict your ability to kind of purchase and sit on the properties?
Uh, yeah, yes. At some point, um, we will, we will need to have a conversation about those, those holdings and what we intend to do with them. We'll talk a little bit about that later in the deck as well, that I think would incorporate your concerns. So let's talk about the future. We, we, on this next slide, we have some growth projections. The first, this bar chart is from the last pros plan. And so you can see rapid growth throughout the county. Uh, these are projections in twenty thirty and twenty forty. And then if you go down to the, the table on the bottom or the spreadsheet on the bottom, this is, this is the most current projection that I pulled just a few weeks ago from the OFM's website. You can, if you look at twenty forty on the bar chart, it says six forty-three. And then you look at twenty forty on the table below, it says six sixty plus. That is, that is not a typo. That's how much the growth projections have changed since we completed our most recent pros plan. So not only are we growing rapidly, th- the rate, uh, appears to have increased since the last time the pros plan was completed. So as I mentioned earlier, people want to come to Clark County. And the next slide, same data, different format, directly from the state's website. So what does this mean for our future? And, uh, we're going to talk about that, talk about these three scenarios. We're also going to look at, uh, communities where this pace of growth has happened. And this transition from a, uh, a system that has served us for so long, has an opportunity to grow up or mature, if you will. And we'll talk about what that looks like. So the first scenario in our future is the decline, what we're calling the decline scenario, assuming we do nothing. Assuming that the gaps remain. You can see what would be required or closure of parks. Closure of park amenities from those parks that stay open. So things like splash pads and restrooms might need to close. A decline of level of service throughout the county and end of, we would essentially need to end new park acquisition and development if we don't, if we don't, uh, figure out how to fill the gaps in this decline scenario. We would, we would ensure that we would have safety issues and liability issues throughout the system due to a, a lack of, of staffing. That's the decline scenario, assuming we, we take no action. The second scenario is a sustained scenario. This assumes we just fill the gap. We just figure out how to fund that gap that we showed. This would keep parks open. It would keep amenities open. It would allow us to, to essentially keep doing what we've done at the level we've done it. It was not adequate to meet growth needs and those growth projections that we just looked at. Folks moving in would not have places to recreate. We would not meet our comp plan commitments or GMA commitments. We would continue to invest in new park acquisitions and we would be able to, we would be able to do preventative maintenance at a limited basis. It doesn't increase the level of service of our maintenance and it doesn't address deferred maintenance into the future. So that's the, that's the sustained scenario, filling the gap. The last scenario is the fulfill scenario. Looking at our growth projections from the state, looking at how other agencies have made this leap during a time of rapid growth. This scenario assumes funding to maintain levels consistent with peer counties who have experienced growth like we are. It would allow us to tackle prevent, preventative maintenance within the growth of the system. Would allow us to keep pace with growth, growth and fill that, those level of service gaps in acreage. And it would allow us to reinvest in a different way in our significant regional parks that are our heaviest, uh, visited parks throughout our, our park system. So those are the three scenarios. And, um, regardless of the scenario and the path we choose to walk down, the next slide are actions that we as staff need to take regardless of the scenario. Number one is rebalancing of our Parks and Nature portfolio. We know, for example, that within the Vancouver urban growth boundary, those neighborhood parks, as the city annexes north over time, those neighborhood parks typically become city parks. There's a transition, there's a handoff that happens. So the nature of the system changes over time as city boundaries grow and change. Those parks, um, are fantastic. They're, they're very heavily used by neighbors, but they're not indicative of a county system, a regional system. And so we need to do that rebalancing and start that process and thinking through what that looks like. We need to invest and revitalize our, our regionally significant regional parks. Making them true places of, to gather where the things that we talked about earlier in terms of access and welcoming parks, health and wellness, sustainable parks, where that stuff happens in a different way, uh, than it does now. And we're calling it operationalizing our existing assets, bringing together the partners, nonprofit and for-profit partners to help us activate our regional parks in a different way. And creating those synergistic relationships throughout the county. I mentioned this already, but synchronizing with city, really meaningfully having conversations about what the transition over time looks like and planning for that intentionally. And then really a mindset item on this last bullet, and that's focusing on the future, a, a true future-focused mentality within our, within our team, within our staff, uh, within our community. So those are actions that we need to, we need to take to modernize our system and to help our system reach its potential as it shifts and changes over time. We're going to talk about some actual examples where counties and, and other jurisdictions have done this, have made this transition happen. First up is Magnuson Park. So this is a Seattle, city of Seattle. This is a regional park. You can tell by the size of it. City of Seattle provides some regional parks, but largely they're, they're a smaller park system in terms of the size of the parks.
Where is this located?
This is Lake Washington, yeah, in, uh, Seattle.
Whi- whi- which, is it on the, uh, east side of Mercer Island?
Correct. Uh, we- a west side of Mercer Island.
The west side?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. So it's, it's within the city of Seattle limits. This park was actually a, a former military installation that the city acquired. And, um, it operated as a park for many years, a, a place. Then the city realized, we have a, we have a different role. This place can play a different role in the community. And so you can tell by the number of athletic fields and buildings that are in the park. They reimagine this space. They reactivate it, it, they reinvested in this regionally significant park. It is jam-packed with youth sports. It is jam-packed with, there's a tennis facility, a private-public partnership within this park. The waterfront was restored, um, and, and there's now a trail, a really nice na- nature walk along the waterfront in this park. So this is an example of what really intentionally focusing on those regionally significant parks that see a, a lot of visitors per year. So that's what the city of Seattle did in, in this transition to meet this rapid growth need in their park system. The next example is, uh, is a King County Trail System. Burt Gilman Trail, uh, runs through the region, through the county, and it connects communities throughout the county. And this is a, this is a multimodal active transportation network, uh, spine, if you will, that connects communities. And so we have opportunities like this within Clark County that we could realize. And really thinking of ourselves as a regional provider and regional trails are a key part of that matrix as, as rapid growth happens.
You, you know, there was a study done on, uh, Chilachi Railroad, uh, rails and trails.
Yes.
Be good to maybe dust that off.
Yes, yes. Chair, Chair Marshall, I've, I've looked at that study and, uh, that, that potential trail corridor is one. There are numerous potential opportunities for us to connect communities and provide this off-ride, ride-of-way transportation network within our county. And, and so as we grow rapidly, this, this is going to show up, our trail connections within our, within our community. The last, uh, real-life example I will give you is, is King County's Marymore Park. This also, this was a, a large regional park, much like Louisville or Lackamas Lake or Frenchman's Bar are for us. It was heavily utilized, um, but it, it didn't have that vibrancy that really met kind of the outcomes that we are, we are shooting for here in Clark County. And these are examples, this is directly from their King County's website. They really intentionally created partnerships, um, and activated the space in a very different way and reinvested in that site, in that regionally significant park. So there's a, there's a movie series, an off-leash dog park. There's a large concert series. All of these contribute to offsetting the operating expenditures at the site. Produces a significant amount of revenue at, at Marymore Park. The next slide is more examples directly from King County's website, Cirque du Soleil, and, uh, there's significant rentals. There's actually a velodrome at, at Marymore Park as well. So those are just three examples of, of a county that has seen rapid growth. A, a park system in a, in a, in a county and residents of the county that truly intentionally plan for meeting that growth. And no surprise, a funding, an operational funding model that's sustained and provided for those gaps that needs to be filled as the growth happened. And so to, to kind of summarize on this next slide, there are some fantastic examples within the state of Washington of how this happened. This is a, this is a positive story. This, as I mentioned, this is a, this is a story of people wanting to move here for, for higher quality of life. And, uh, those options are there. They exist and they can be employed by the county to, to make this a reality in Clark County. So the next slide is, these are just a few examples of mechanisms that could potentially be utilized and considered, uh, within Clark County to, to fill this O and M funding gap, to invest in those significantly regional parks, to plan for the intentional transfer of, of parks as cities grow into, uh, existing park where we provide service currently. And these are, um, these are some examples. So King County, for example, utilized a levy tool, levy mechanism that, um, that provides for their O and M funding, uh, throughout their system. They're actually renewing that this August. And it's been around for about, I think, twelve years now. And, uh, so just a few examples, but, um, so our, to our recommendation on how we proceed. And our recommendation is to pull together some of the key stakeholders throughout our county, throughout our communities, throughout our cities. Pull, pull a group together that we, we are calling here our Sustainable Future Task Team. Call it whatever we want, a, a group that evaluates and reviews a list of potential funding mechanisms and sources. A, and provides updates to council, uh, at work sessions on a regular basis, presents a final report to council about the, the potential pathways forward. And, um, and then, and then creates connections throughout the community. These potentially could be key stakeholders from nonprofits, cities, organizations that heavily, heavily utilize parked infrastructure, community members, um, who are interested in, in diving into this detail. So that would be our recommendation for you today. And we're happy to answer any questions you have about any of the detail on the slides.
Chair, I have a, a question.
Yes, please go ahead.
Um, we have a Parks Committee already. Are they not doing some of these things that you've mentioned for recommendations?
So the, the Parks Advisory Board, uh, certainly, certainly could, um, be utilized in this fashion. So the Parks Advisory Board certainly could be utilized in this fashion. The Parks Advisory Board is not made up of all the key stakeholders in our community. The Parks Advisory Board certainly has a level of detail knowledge that would absolutely need to play a role in this conversation. And, but there are many other voices throughout the community that I'm sure would like to be represented and have a voice and a say in what this potentially looks like. So that's why we are recommending a separate group to dive into detail.
So we could potentially expand on them to include these other additional stakeholders, correct? I mean, that's a possibility, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Go ahead.
Yeah, bear with me, I've got a few here. First of all, you know, back to, I think it was Councillor Little's comment about level of service. And first of all, I want to say I appreciate this, and this looks great. I think this is, you know, we need to have a process that was fairly similar to the Clean Water update that we did, you know? Just a complete look at the overall system, very holistic view, and then dial down into the details. And when you talk about that holistic view, for me personally, I feel like before we go down this road, I think we should address the level of service issue and figure out what it is that we want in this community's level of service, but much more in detail and in depth than what we currently have because we just kind of have like regional park average, you know, neighborhood park average. But I would like to go into specific areas of, you know, like Hazeldale Orchard and assign a specific level of service for each of those independent areas because they're developed differently, they have different levels of density. And the other reason why I say this really needs to be looked at and potentially updated is because of the massive changes that we're looking and the comprehensive plan update. You know, I don't know what those old figures were based on, but we in our building now, in our building environment, we're going to end up with a lot less green. You know, we're building a lot more density. And so I think it behooves us to really look at how we are zoning different areas, make sure that they have a higher level of service because they need it even much more so than, you know, suburban areas that have backyards behind all of their homes. So it needs to be much more in detail, not just a broad, this whole area lumped into one, and this is what we think needs to be there. It needs to be dialed into those specific areas. And I feel like, my initial thought is that that should happen before we convene the task force. But I'm open to your thoughts on that. And, you know, it just kind of goes back to, you know, the whole comp plan update and meeting, I hate that term, meeting the GMA. You know, that's not what I envisioned for Clark County, which it's important, we have to, right? It's the law, but that's not what I think our vision for Clark County should be. And that's where this whole process falls in, is finding what that vision is. You know, one of the things that I kind of struggle with, and I'm still, I mean, this is brand new. It's the first time you've kind of introduced some of these concepts to us, is, you know, I look at that picture that you put of one of the regional parks. I think it was a King County one. And I'll be honest, I struggle with that, the images that I saw because our county is, it's a beautiful place. It's a green, calming environment, and that's what I see as our need. You know, we're becoming more and more dense every day. With that comes many challenges. Mental health, I think, is a huge component that is affected by density. And you need that connection to nature. When you see it packed full of people, that I don't think is exactly what we need. But I don't know, maybe it's just occasionally packed like that, and the rest of the time it's wide open. But, you know, just some of the things, I know that, you know, it could be a potential revenue source which could help fund the system. I understand that, and somewhere there's got to be that balance. You know, I don't want these concrete villages where people come for concerts and stuff. I want green, open space that maybe we can use occasionally for those high occupancy things, but still maintain that connection to nature that people need. And the last thing I was just kind of curious about was when we talked about the overall acreages. I know this has been, and you may not know this answer right off bat, but I know that this has been a question that has circulated a lot in the public, is Camp Bonneville considered in those acreage numbers?
Thank you, Councillor. We did prepare a memo that was intended to answer some of these things. You may not have received it yet. The Prose Plan does include, this morning? The Prose Plan does include Camp Bonneville. If you look in the appendix, page 75, Camp Bonneville is included as an undeveloped natural area. There is a little bit of a disconnect. Camp Bonneville is, I have it here, 3,840 acres. However, if you look into what's included in the Prose Plan, there's 350 undeveloped acres included of the portion of Camp Bonneville.
Okay, so only 350 of those acres are included. Okay, great. And apparently that's in our inbox this morning, so I got ahead of myself. But again, for me, it comes back to this, you know, individualizing different areas. They all have different needs, they all have different level of service, but we can't just rely on that broad perspective. Yeah, I mean, I just can't say enough how important it is that we not leave specific areas in a shortage because the whole area as a whole has a sufficient level of service. So those are some of my comments, and thank you for hearing them.
Thank you, thank you, Councillor. Within our PIF districts are each planned for separately. So within the urban growth boundary, each one has its own level of service and own collection or resource to build out that area. So that intentional planning area by area is happening within the urban growth boundary. But to your point, the way that we calculate level of service is acres per thousand residents. So if you think about that, all it identifies is the number of acres per thousand. It doesn't say anything about the quality. It doesn't say anything about the nature of the space. It doesn't say if it's paved or not. So in our next Prose Plan update, our intent is to modernize our level of service calculation to capture the quality of the public spaces that we're constructing and that we're aiming for.
That is exactly what I'm looking for, so thank you for that. And, you know, I lost my thought again, darn it. Great work, I'll end it at that, it might come back.
Okay, Councillor Little.
Yeah, thank you. And I think all those questions and points that Councillor Young brought up are important and should be addressed. I don't think we need to wait, though, to create a task force because they may help us find some of those answers. So I was hoping if the council would agree, if you could provide a little bit more meat on the bones here on your proposed task force on what certain stakeholders should be on that committee? And then also just details on how often do you think they should meet and come back to the council? And then we could review that language and potentially approve it next meeting would be my hope, whether we, as Councillor Belkot suggested, expand the existing advisory committee or create a new one.
Yeah, great, great question. So our recommendation would include a simple process for selection, a simple application process through an online tool, that we are soliciting input from a broad array of our community to ensure that it represents everybody's voices in our community. Some of the groups that I know would be interested, who have already reached out to me to figure out how, within their particular interest area, we build out parks that benefit their organization. To bring all of those groups together, this could include hikers, people who fish, people who backpack, people who are horseback riders, people who are garden and/or egg enthusiasts and advocates, people who are boaters on Vancouver Lake, people who are users of our beach, and ensure that everybody throughout the county is represented as much as we possibly can, really, truly listening to those folks and those organizations they represent, and bringing everybody together to one agreed-upon potential path or several potential paths forward for recommendation. So that's kind of a little bit of what we would recommend. It could include a set number of Parks Advisory Board members, or it could not. And that would be a tier determination. I would say probably a minimum of two or three Parks Advisory Board members all the way up to the entire committee. And then in terms of timeline or frequency of meeting, typically, this is, requires a minimum of a monthly meeting. And some months would require multiple meetings a month. Probably at least a six-month process, maybe nine. That's my experience doing this work in the past.
Thank you. Would you recommend to anyone who's an expert on the funding mechanisms themselves? It sounds like that is the goal.
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
So we could bring that proposal to you of kind of the general makeup of that committee, if you'd like, and bring that back to you or forward that to you for your consideration. Okay.
Councillor Young remembered his question.
Yes, I'm doing this more frequently, need more rest. PIF districts?
Yes.
That is something that also need, and I remember we spoke about that recently, and I can't remember what the end result is, but are we planning to get this figured out as part of this process or prior to it?
So I would imagine that, and looking back at our list of potential sources here in the deck, we've got a number of potential sources to fund future parks. Parks impact fees or PIFs are certainly one of those potential options from the capital side, from the one-time cost side. And PIF districts and updating those PIF districts absolutely should be part of the consideration of this committee and the set of recommendations to you.
And not just to look at like the PIF fees, but the actual geographic drawing of those locations, I think, can be very impactful. And we end up with too much resources in one area and not enough in another. So yeah, appreciate that. So that will be looked at.
Absolutely.
Great.
Okay, I got a few things. In, with the like multifamily housing, and there's requirements that there's set aside a certain amount of area for landscaping and for recreation. And I think it's come up sometimes, I wondered if it would be better for, if that requirement could be shifted just to create a neighborhood park. And so there might be a good, there might be an opportunity to consult with DEB to see how some of that could help create some neighborhood parks. And I think some of the developers may be better or worse at developing parks. And it might be better just to shift that money over to the parks professionals as long as it creates, it fills the need for those multifamily housing developments. And along those lines, I think that that huge area, that urban area of unincorporated space is going to be developing more and more compactly. And we're looking at, C Trans, looking at Bus Rapid Transit. And along with that, you know, the transit-oriented development, a key component to make that work is parks. And I know parks and land are very expensive within the urban growth area. And now if we're looking at the city of Vancouver, now looking suddenly at the whole entire area to potentially annex, it might be good to reconnect with them on financing and planning these areas if maybe sooner than later, these areas will come in, it's probably going to be later is my guess, come into the city. But I think some joint collaboration there and/or funding would be a very good thing. Because I don't think we can wait as things are developing in those areas. So there's opportunity to make all of that work together. Maybe I'm not asking questions.
No, that's great. This is very helpful. Yeah, thank you, yes.
Good. And I know, Ross, you and I worked on the other side of the river in dealing with parks and metro regional government, and what they've been able to achieve with a series of bond measures over a couple of decades, I think well over a billion dollars, has been invested in natural areas, neighborhood parks, a grant program, the matching dollars. And I wonder if there's a way for us to, if we could replicate some of that because, you know, just moving from the Portland metro area over here, just the resources aren't available here as they are on the other side of the river. And there've been wonderful things. And, you know, people love parks. And if you put something on the ballot related to parks, they probably will support it. And I think it surprised people how much support there was across all of the three counties. So that's something I think we should look, if we can replicate some of what metro and that region has been able to achieve. And then another source of funding, I don't know exactly how this works, but Ross, you might, is I think Metro was able to tap into, because they contract for garbage services, so wastewater, or not wastewater, but waste connection. I think there's a tipping fee, and as part of that money was able to, they found a nexus with parks. So I think that we could find some new revenue streams. And I think the committee that you set up, if there are some of those resources out there that we can pull in to try to create some new revenue sources that, and I think Clean Water Services capitalized trees. I mean, that's a capital expenditure. So I do believe there's some creative avenues we haven't tapped into. I'm not quite sure what rebalancing of Parks and Nature portfolio means.
Yeah.
So there's my question, what does that mean?
Great question, thank you, yeah. To all your points, thank you, those are fantastic. So to your first point about the nature of the system and the role of future development in meeting parks and natural areas, spaces within those heavily populated areas or future dense areas, is we absolutely have to figure out how we change the nature of our system to one being, providing neighborhood, small neighborhood parks that are typical of a city, quite honestly. How we rebalance the system so that over time, those are not part of what really is a county system, is a regional and community park system. It's not a small, it's not a small park, parklet, plaza type of system. And so rebalancing the system is taking the initial steps to work with our city partners and community members to figure out how we, over time, transfer parks to other entities and jurisdictions and create a system that looks more like a regional community park system, a county, a true county park system. And so each of the players within the county, whether it be a city or county, has a role. The county typically is a large park, community and regional parks only. And so that's what that refers to, is that process and series of conversations and coordination and planning jointly, so that we play our role and cities play theirs within the meeting the need.
Right, there still is that huge area that isn't a city and might not be a city for a while.
Correct.
Go ahead, Jenny.
What I was going to say is, one of the reasons, as I understand it, these transfers haven't occurred over the years is that whether you're city or county, it doesn't matter, Washington, anywhere, park systems are just not Washington, anywhere, park systems are just not getting the operation and maintenance dollars they need. So that's part of, part of the problem. You don't want to take on an asset if you can't operate, if you can't operate it.
I think part of the success of Metro is that they collaborated with their counties and their cities, and everyone could see that they, they, there was something in it for them. I think that was fundamentally important.
Yeah, I think, I think you're, you're spot on, having worked in the, in the metro region in Oregon, that absolutely is a crucial component, that we are, we are doing this together, and we're not doing it to a city, and we're doing it with. And so we've, we've already started casual conversations about the, the needs across jurisdictional boundaries. Those operational needs that we reviewed today in the, in the county system are present in the city systems as well. And so a regional approach will absolutely be something we look at and communicate with the, with the, with the cities and with the stakeholder task team.
Just two really quick extra comments just along this lines. I think that the task force should have a city of Vancouver staff on there as well as a member of the PRAC, at least one, the Parks and Rec Advisory Commission. Then the other thing too is, I just want to say, especially when we are making such massive changes, like I mentioned before, in, in terms of the comprehensive plan and density, and we talk about affordable housing and income bands for all, and we're looking at going towards a fee revenue system, we have got to make sure that people that can't afford still have access to our parks. So that has to be a component of it. I don't know how it works, but it has to be there.
Absolutely. So we at the staff level and through our, our work to, to develop the last Prose Plan, accessibility and ensuring that everybody feels welcome in our parks is absolutely a priority for us, and it, and so that will be top of mind as we proceed.
Thank you.
Just one other idea I have that might not be on your radar, and that's public benefit rating system for those properties, the open spaces that are privately owned. The Assessor, we, we had talked about this some years ago, the public benefit rating system. Some of those benefits, the property owner gets a reduction on their property tax if it's seen that they're providing a public benefit. One of those benefits could be public access to private property. So that might be an angle that could really greatly expand the public's access to land. Not every landowner is going to want to do this, but some, some will, especially if there's an incentive for them.
Thank you, we'll look into that.
Gosh, I think we may have exhausted all our questions for you. I really appreciate taking a hard look at this, having the numbers for us to see, to understand where we're at now and where we could get to. So thank you for your work on that. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
That sounds like it. Thank you very much. That concludes our work session. We'll reconvene at 1:04 council time.